And if we can have a roll call on that motion to amend.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. So now, we need to have a motion on the amended, that's correct. Okay, so Mr. Cagle's original motion is the one we're voting on, however, it's been amended to include the correction. That's correct. So now, we can have a roll call on the, on Mr. Cagle's original motion as amended. And I think Mr. Sewell seconded, I believe.
Yes.
No, just clear.
Original motion.
Yes, okay, no, excuse me, no, got you, severe motion. So if we can have the roll call on that, on Mr. Sewell's motion, Mr. Cagle seconded as amended.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. This is what happens when you take five weeks off. You had to knock the rust off. All right. Now, item nine B, ordinance 1030.
An order to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend and restate in its entirety Title 17 refuse and trash disposal, Chapter 1 Garbage and Trash, East Ridge Municipal Code.
Motion to approve.
We do need, since it was tabled, the last amendment, we'll need to pull it from the table. So if we can have a motion to remove it from the table.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
You seconded, okay. So we have a motion and a second to remove this item from the table. We can have a roll call on that, please.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Now, we can consider the ordinance itself.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second, second? Do we have a second? Are there any questions?
I have Bill and Patty on our seatations for tentative. They want to just briefly make note of the change.
But it was, we looked at it, it didn't have nothing on it about this. You had two seats for a beginning, still had the old, you'd be wanting by your regular works channel. You changed that, didn't have nothing about the, our drop off center, the dumpster, stuff in, we added that. And the brush, it had two weeks of nap, biggest we take. Got lengthy, Lord has, got the notebook to pick it up. Some housekeeping, a little housekeeper stuff.
Fantastic. Tell you what.
I think the big issues, the big items she's on page three of thirteen and six of thirteen, those basically are yellow and you're different. Those are the dog. The other was pretty much clean up language.
Mr. Perry, did you get any move for me today? Okay, and this is some other things that's going through, I saw just minor changes that I want to list and press. On page six of thirteen, that's section seventeen dash one one zero. The caption, how would, rubbish is a defined term under the new, under this, ordinance. Rubbish is, talks about solid waste, combustible waste, paper, cardboard, plastic. But there's a definition for, whoa, let me stop. When you look at what is below rubbish, it really addresses leaves, grass cuttings, garbage trimmings. There is a defined term for yard refuse, which is leaves, shrubs, trimmings, flipping. My recommendation would be to change the caption to collectible yard refuse, colon, and get rid of the term rubbish. Got a little inconsistency, this is. It's a minor one, but just as we're clear. So I will, I want to clarify this, would be seventeen dash one one zero, level of collectible yard refuse, rather than rubbish. Since rubbish is a fine term. Turn over to section seventeen dash one two five.
Page nine.
Yeah, page nine of thirteen. This is the section. Yeah, with penalty. And this provision states, any residents who fails to pay the sanitation service fee in a timely manner, or provides inaccurate information as required by section three above. There's not a section three above. So I would just recommend you just strike out the portion that says, or provides inaccurate information as required by section three above. Strike that. So that it now would read, direct that it would read as follows. Any resident who fails to pay the sanitation service fee in a timely manner, shall be punished to the magistrate's in-laws by law for violation of the East Ridge ordinance. That makes sense. And that may have been, I may have missed that one, I was working, Mr. Perry, I may have missed that one. And the last amendment that I've seen reviewed is section seventeen dash one two eight. Same page, it's on page nine thirteen. Section seventeen dash one two eight. It references a, within the body of that provision is seventeen dash one two two. It should actually say section one two three.
Not two two two.
That's correct. So just substitute three in, and it would read section one seven dash one two three, paren two, close paren. Any questions? That, I think, will clarify some of the precise there. And I know Councilman Cagle, a couple of weeks ago, he identified some inconsistencies, and I think that maybe would refer to one off, or at least some caught.
One time in a time frame.
Okay, okay, okay. Then it was just more I stopped going through it, and I knew I had gone out a little later than Saturday. So those are the only, so if there's no objection, those would be the changes I would recommend.
So if we could, we'll do the same thing as we did a moment ago. And it is offer an amendment to the existing motion. And that amendment would be to make these three corrections. Amendment. Uh, the three, right. Okay, so, so the amendment is to make these three revisions, corrections, amendments. And that would, as, as, has been described outside the term. So do we have a motion to amend? Motion. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Thank you.
A motion and a second to amend? If we can have a roll call on the amendment.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. So now, we will need a vote on the original motion now as amended. We can have the roll call on that, please.
Motion to approve the original motion.
Well, we do, we have, yeah, well, we have your, your motion, we've amended it, and we already have the second on it, so we just, at this point, just need the vote. So if we can have the roll call.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes.
Uh, what is the, is really the building actually on seventeen, uh, that, what we're doing? Have fifty? I see all cans stay on the street all the time. Who, who want to do that? That's, that's cold, they, they've called us several times, like, cans been out, and what they, their garage ran, so they, they've been out two or three days. And they, they got out.
And another, we're on this, I don't take it, I, I know we have, you said we had, uh, on the cans, we have, they get damaged and stuff, we have warranty on some of them, certainly not, uh, I know there's a lot of lids in this, and, you know, when you're up high like I am, you see a lot of, well, that's the, and a lot of, you know, wheels off and stuff, so. I am, can your guys take your number down and turn up the lid?
Yeah, or if, if, you know, citizen car, there's a lot of them, they, they don't. And once, we, we, I've ordered.
I mean, if we can get, if we can get the stuff, like, if we're going up, start, buy some cans somewhere down the line, if we can get some of the stuff, like, that, hey, for.
He, what he's trying to say, he orders the cans, he also orders lids, and we can put new lids on the, on the cans. And you do that.
Yeah, the, the, it depended on the owner, now, the first we order the warranty is, is run out, and, and. They make it so hard now, when you're warrantying, I take pictures, give them the number, you know, and all that, and they just do it, so. I ordered two more cases, just lids, lids, they, they send us six dollars a piece. And, you know, we sit out, four, we got, got four screw gun, four screw, put the lid right back on, you know, that's such simple. With the can buzzing, we just take another can. Here, Ken, he was recycling, take him out of recycling, if you want, go anywhere.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. It did, uh, with council's blessing, I would like to, uh, to skip a little bit and look at item H, request from Suash Patel to relocate single family dwelling, and Mr. Patel is here, and we've already been, we've waited an hour and forty-five minutes through, through what we've had in the meeting, and if he stays here, it'll be another thirty minutes or so before we get there, so. I would like to wait and consider that, if that's okay.
If you approve, I can say.
So we will, we will do that, we will consider this request to relocate the family dwelling, single family dwelling from fifteen oh three Truman to sixteen fourteen Truman. Yes, sir.
Council, I had a question in regards to that, I submitted a, please vary your request for setback. The apartment is P fourteen Truman. Will, this house is going to be on the same footprint, but I guess the previous house was under a different regulation, and if we're setback, I don't know, might with the four foot or so. That, it's going to be exactly in the same footprint as the previous house.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Patel, if you could come forward here, and, uh, but apparently, we weren't able to pick up what, what you were being, what you were saying.
State line road, on sixteen fourteen, this new house is going to be exactly in the same footprints of the previous house that was demolished. I believe the setback requirement currently is twenty-five feet, we are at twenty-four feet. So I don't know if the council needs to approve a variance, or just.
Council's before a variance on this, right? There's a really a four foot variance request on this. Does that go before the board of justice, because four variants?
Can so, can we go to the board and tell them?
We already, we already applied for a variance.
Okay.
So the lot width is over sixty feet, and you got a constituent on a corner lot, you got to have setback to twenty-five in front here, and that side, which is on state line.
Okay.
But he, does, do you understand that this, this floor is not four?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to come back here because it is delaying the development project.
They don't, they don't.
Yeah, there's a meeting on that next week, I just wanted to make sure that the council knew of the, the approval, so we, we don't have to.
Got you. Thank you. Yep, anything else?
If you got any, any that handles it.
Yeah. I just want to mention one thing, uh, the house that is being removed, is being relocated, actually is part of the corner lot at Truman and Ringel Road, which would be the southwest. And Mr. Suash Patel is going to be building a five store, a five store, five day, uh, commercials, retail center, with the anchor being a Marcus Pizza. So we certainly look forward to him and that development coming forward. So without buying the house behind it, he was, by buying the house behind it, he was able to generate a larger building, more market. So it's, it's a big advantage to the city.
Got one question.
Yes.
Where we're moving the house to, is that a corner lot?
Is.
Could you check, be sure that he has to have a variance on a corner lot, because I don't know if it's taken, uh, any corner lots, indeed, records, uh, you can kind of weigh with twenty-five foot on the sideline to the corner.
Right now.
I think that's what I have to do down here, and I need to have a variance because I have a corner lot.
Corner lot for nineteen seventy-three, I believe, yeah.
So.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So call that aside, a variance.
Absolutely.
Would, would move things along more quickly.
Hand the variance, yeah.
Surely gets that house to properly, to start, Mr.?
So, very good. All right, we have any, any other questions? Okay, if we could have a motion to either approve or deny this request. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this request. Have any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Looking forward to our good pizza. Good pizza. Okay, so we will now go back to item nine C, which is a public hearing for ordinance one zero three one, rezoning case fifteen oh six Prickmore, from C two commercial to R one residential. Having been properly advertised, we will now open this public hearing. And I will give a very brief account of what this is pertaining to, and then we will enter any comments that the crowd might, might have. This particular case on Prickmore, it was back in the eighties, there was a mash rezoning. This particular lot has always been residential, it's a house, and in that mash rezoning, it was rezoned as commercial. The current owner is attempting to sell the house, and for a variety of reasons, needs it to, needs this single family dwelling to actually be zoned correctly. And so, the request is to rezone it R one. It did pass, it was approved by the planning commission, and that moved it here. So the, the question is before us now. But I do want to allow opportunity for any citizens, business owners, and certain parties to make comment if they would like to. I see none. So we will close this public hearing. It's my favorite kind of public hearing. And we will now consider item D, ordinance one zero three one.
An order to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend zoning regulations and zoning map in the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to recent property located at one five zero six Prickmore Road, from C two commercial district to R one residential district. Tax amount, number one six nine J dash G dash zero zero nine.
Do we have a motion in regard to this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Say your motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve, this is on first reading. Are there any questions? And I will say, this, there are other houses in that area that are also some commercial. It would not be shocking to see other people come forward as time goes on and say they would like to have the same thing. So, so again, just to kind of make you aware, there were some neighbors at the planning commission meeting that, that asked questions about the current zoning, what the process is, and all the rest, so we, we may see this again. We have no comments or questions, so ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. The ordinance is approved.
Question about rezoning?
Yes.
Whenever we come in and rezon something, how long does it, how long do we get, give the people that we approved the rezoning for, to go in, start doing work, for cleaning that up, or it is? We rezoned one down here on Lazar Street, they haven't touched since we approved it, still looks like, you know.
I've actually went one framing inspection on one side of that. Yes, sir, I have. Now, you can't tell on the outside, but I can get a hold of the current owner, and, you know, have the plan. We, we have, we've done this before, you know, it's, so, yeah, it's not. It doesn't, but he is, slowly, slowly.
So. Item nine E is ordinance one zero three two, here on first reading.
An order to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number one zero one three, title, an order to provide revenue for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, for the fiscal year July one, two thousand sixteen, to June thirty, two thousand seventeen, appropriating the same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government, by designating a portion of the fund balance of the general fund, and by changing the revenues of the grant fund, drug fund, and capital project fund, and by changing the expenditures of the general fund, grant fund, co-fund, and capital project fund.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second. We have a second.
What's the general fund, is that to pay your office?
It's, uh, G. I don't want to make a statement that's not completely accurate, so I'll let you answer the question, what is the drug fund?
Drug funds are revenues that are generated from the coordinate state mandated laws, if they're happening to be there, uh, does need applause.
G.
I thought it was a lot.
That's okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance, so we have the roll calls, please.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Now we have item F, the grant consent agenda. And we can sit back for a few minutes as, as the city attorney reads his, reads to us for a while.
Resolution number two six three nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving contract change order for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, Tennessee Department of Transportation's transportation alternatives grant. Resolution number two six four zero, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated to accept the Hamilton County two thousand sixteen homeland security grant for the East Ridge Fire Department. Resolution number two six four one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the manager or his designated to accept the Hamilton County two thousand sixteen homeland security grant for the East Ridge Police Department. Resolution number two six four two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the contract extension for the Tennessee Department of Transportation's ADA retrofitting project. Resolution number six, two six four three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the contract extension for the Tennessee Department of Transportation's fiscal year two thousand fifteen multimodal access grant. So I'm the one generally in charge of this caption, I'll start shortly these.
All right, do we have a motion in regard to the grant consent agenda?
Make motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. We have, any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Item G, resolution number two six four four.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, clarifying and amending the facade improvement grant program for the City of East Ridge.
You've updated, okay.
Yes, sir.
We actually implemented a facade improvement grant program in March two thousand fifteen, subsequently amended it in January nineteen of two thousand sixteen. Primary objective, well, to improve white, licensed commercial property owners, we improve the building imperacies. It's a fifty fifty matching fund grant up to ten thousand dollars for a total of twenty thousand per project. Fortunately, this program hasn't been a real boom, because we've only had one applicant, one great applicant, in the past, since, since its, its inception. Sorry, I have, sitting in the dentist's chair for three hours today, having some stuff down in my mouth. At the, at least I'm not drooling. It's darning, anesthesia's wearing out, my tongue is just starting to work. Anyway, city staff, Kenny Custer, Amanda Dodd, we sat down, you got a copy, a redline copy that's put together. I just want to touch on some of the major amendments that we've done. First off, we changed this to a building facade improvement grant program. Facade, when you say that, it suggests the front of the building. There are other concerns that some businesses are having, updating up the business, or changing business over, system business over, what would be ADA requirements inside the building, lighting inside the building, uh, awnings, uh, let's see, whatever, some kind of architectural, uh, inside work that needs to be done. So we changed the name, added building facade improvement grant program. On the first page, a lot of just clean up language, but if you go to under eligible applicants, you say eligible requirements are, we deleted the wording, businesses have been in operation for a minimum of three years, and owners of the building property that own property for a minimum of five years. Odd line of it is, I don't think we really want to put that, how long this has been there. Somebody comes in from the outside and wants to buy a vacant building on Ringel Road and fix it up, I think we would want to encourage that, instead of saying, well, you haven't been here for two years, so you don't qualify. Or you haven't been properly over three years, so you don't qualify. So it's the staff's opinion that we need to take that right of chat. Somebody wants to come into our city and take an old building that's been closed and made, or anybody who wants to approve the facade, uh, should have that opportunity to do so. So those are two major changes. On the following page, we talked about eligible applicants. One change we made there, uh, instead of taking into mind special consideration maybe given if the business is located, then a multiple tenant. within a multiple tenant building, not a standalone building. We basically changed that language to say, single business tenant located within a multiple tenant building with regards to facade work. So we're basically saying there is a long building that has one roof stored in there. We want to make sure we get the biggest bang out of it to get the most out of this program. On eligible projects, we expanded this significantly. First off, we took out the word paint and put out, and took out the word roofing, you know, maintenance work. These are maintenance items. Painting, roofing work, re-roofing, these are maintenance items, and they should be taken care of during the tenure of the building. You shouldn't be paying somebody to go paint the building. However, we did make a reference in this, in these provisions, that if a person is doing a facade treatment on the whole front and painting is a part of that, we're okay with that because that actually is a facade treatment. If somebody wants to sit there and say, well, fine, we want to take this old metal building, we want to put a new stucco finish on the front of it, but we need to paint it, okay, fine. Painting could go wrong because it's supplemental to the work that's being done. So going down here, indoor replacement, awnings, that means adopted design standards, roof facade signage, big one. We're going to see a lot of signage grants coming in, uh, once the multimodal and tap grant go into construction. So that area from Tamaris East to Bryan and Tamaris West to Helwar. When we put the sidewalks in 10 foot on the south side, 5 foot on the north side, a lot of these businesses are going to have to take down or relocate the signage. This is going to help them upgrade that sign. So we definitely want the signage.
Do they have to go to, do standard design after bold sign?
They would have to, yes, yes. Now, yes. That's why this grant would be important. We took up landscaping and parking lots because really emphasis working at the building. We were talking about more money, that's fine, but we're only talking about $20,000. I don't want that going after spending on landscaping and parking lot. We really want to enhance the building. And now on this next page, we add all of these additional ones. Architecture facade renovation, improvements to ceilings and walls, installation or removal of fixed walls, internal architectural changes, internal and external lighting, permanent fixtures, aesthetic detailing, ADA improvements, installation of new HVAC systems, electric plumbing operations to bring the structure up to required codes, additional new constructions with existing structure for expansion. We added this all in because they all have a say in regard to that building. They're all detailed, they're part of that building. Personally, they hold off not too much with facade, they're not going to open up the building. Doesn't have electrical system or an HVAC system, that's workable. So we include those in as eligible projects. And ineligible projects, uh, we put down the paint in the buildings, and then down at the very bottom of that section, we have, these funds are not eligible for routine repairs or maintenance. Somebody's going to do, take the belt by a building that has a couple of windows that are broken in the front, and all they're going to do is replace those windows, that's going to be maintenance. This grant is not for that. So we want to make sure of that. On from the design guidelines, we did go into the rear of this document, we did a lot of read out. The reason why, it was just repetitive wording over and over and over again, but we really didn't need that. We did say on the top of the following page, where you see yellow, applicants must follow all architectural design standards as adopted by the city of East Ridge. And then in the middle of the page, we put down businesses may only be eligible for grant funds once every 24 months. Uh, that's one that we put in there. I mean, certainly you don't want a person coming in, getting one, and then a follower coming in and doing another, and a follower coming in doing another. Then again, on the other hand, uh, you may want to have the ability to come in 24 months later to get another grant or another answer to the bill. That's up to you whether you want that or not. Add this in some of the other design standard guidelines I've had in the past with other cities. Some had, some didn't. Some said, you get one shot, that's it, don't get another one. It's lost progress. I don't know if you want to take that stance. And then further, we've read it up, we've read out all the other, taken all that, eliminated all that, so we get back unrequired drawings, permanent information, the design review committee, staff that will review consistency with the building facade improvement, and a reversible process, and then of course, the, the application. I will say, at the end of this application, you see the property owner authorization page. Reason for that is, if you're renting a building and you apply for the grant, we want the property owner to know improvements are being made, so that's why we're asking that the property owner sign off, just give his authorization, and he's aware of this application. And we're saying, I don't want somebody to get, be approved a grant, and then next thing I know, a year later, property owner's sitting here saying, why'd you give him money for that? I didn't have that there. This just makes you know that he or she is aware of that. You don't need the person to come in, you don't, it's a landlord that's, who's out of state, that's fine. Not a big deal. Please, we have them fill this out, fax it in, or email it to us, so we can at least have it on file. And that's the, those are the changes, the recommended changes that the staff asked. Would entertain any questions that you may have?
Yes, sir. Over here on this, uh, back and back and back, your overview, overview and purpose. Attorney says the business must have obtained an East Ridge business license to operate within the city limits at the time the application is received. Okay, my question is, what if the property owner wants to come in and apply for the grant just to renovate this building, make it look more subtle, not attractive, and sell tenant, and then he does not have a business license?
That's a good point, I favor. You know, and all due essence, I would, staff would waive that requirement. But we would probably put language in there. I've had that before, where people put in and they want to fix up the front and then rent it out. They don't know what business is going in there.
So we're going to have the property owner come in, be eligible for a grant?
Where was that, I'm sorry?
I'm, it's up here somewhere else, but I took that in on the back. Building overview and purpose page.
We have somebody that, that wants to do that, like that turn down.
I'm on page two in that one.
Over view really?
And I got the next to the last. Tell us, Bill, tell us what happens in that?
Oh, I see. It's, uh, second page, third from the top. Business must obtain an East Ridge business license to operate within the city. That, eligible applicants, we can take that out. That was, that was interesting language that was in there.
Yeah, that was a question we had.
Yeah, you know, really in all essence, I have had individuals that, the last several cities, that property owners bought a building, they said, I want to apply for the grant, and they want to fix out the front, facade-wise, or put ADA requirements in, that's a big one in today's society. And they didn't have a, you know, a business license yet. Property owners don't have business licenses, right? And you do want the property owners to be, we feel, the staff does, we do feel that we want property owners to be eligible for this, for this program. Now, the good thing about this is for the next five years, any of these applicants that come in or business owners that come in that are okay within the border region, I can take the money out of there. Because they qualify, so most of them, at say 80, 85% of the properties, businesses on both sides of Ringel Road are in the border region. For those that are not, then we do have, I believe it's $50,000 in our budget for applicants, five applicants. I've had none, believe me, I have reached it. So has the mayor, when we met with some of these businesses.
Have hand-delivered applications to certain places. That ought to give them a hint. Hey, the mayor shows up at your front door and he's, oh, like a facade improvement grant application. But, yeah.
We have, yeah, on Ringel Road. He, he'll do some, yeah, and pick up the night.
Well, we, we ended up approved, but then he got some fed up with it, he didn't have enough donations.
All this building, everybody's building side building, he's popular.
Yeah, I do have, uh, one question, and I'm fine with removing the painting aspect of this. But there are a couple of buildings that you all may know it more, you probably have noticed these. There are a couple of buildings on Ringel Road that are, are operating businesses otherwise would seem to be fine, but they just are in desperate need of painting. I mean, they look awful. How could, I mean, is there anything that we can do to?
We always have what is called discretionary grants, that the city has that opportunity to do that. A person comes in and wants assistance, uh, along those lines, we can provide that.
One of these places I were thinking of, actually, that was one of the places I took the application to them, and it just, the, the paint is almost gone. I mean, you can see more of what had been deployed, but the most recent color, it's, it's that bad. Is there anything we can do to compel them to, to paint?
I'm not sure I can tell you based on what I understand from the city's ordinances. I don't believe there is. Now, can the city do something about it? Yes, it's called property maintenance code, both in the commercial period as well as the residential period, which is going to force the properties and businesses to any kind of paint chipping or dull paint, even through the co-enforcement process. May I, to the system that they paint? That's, now I have heard for some cities that have done that too. It's, it's rather, uh, heavy-handed, but in some instances, what do you want to do with upgrading the appearance of the road? I mean, we make, we have these grants available for businesses to do this. If they're not doing it, it's not an excuse, really, except what I want to do. But it's, you can, you can adopt it.
You know, if it wasn't such an extreme example, and again, I don't, I'm going to great lengths not to just say who it is, but if you drive up down Ringel Road, you'll, I'm sure you'll notice it. But, I mean, there's, there's one place that is up at this end where you can just look at it, and it's like, God, how long has it been since you painted? It's really, really obvious, and it just looks terrible. And I, I don't, I don't know, like I said, I've been there personally and asked them, hey, consider this grant program.
I don't think it matters is that we got, I don't know what's probably created, so this stuff. I wonder if it matters to owners, that owners actually don't, probably don't live anywhere around here. Know anything about the property, is there some way where you can get a letter out, give them some of these? They might decide they will come here and tear down and they'll do. You know, I mean, there's one guy in California that owns four or five homes out here, you know, in their state like that, but they own businesses that don't have any clue what the origins is.
I have talked to a dozen plus developers and realtors in this area and offered either, and I know the mayor has too, offered to talk to groups and organizations about what we can do on Ringel Road.
Like I said, we want to reason, we can get the actual landowner who owns the property. It's like the deal that I, you know, I've talked to, people I know that own that property, just to, well, house, they went and rented, they talk to you, but they've sold it, letting them sign.
They have a contract.
Right.
They have a soul here, they have a closure.
Right, but it's.
Yeah, that's kind of what.
I mean, what you get, I mean, they didn't really know what they were talking about. That I bought to you, and I just want to say, can you get some of these owners and have some of this property that actually, they live in California, but they don't, you know. They might decide, they, it's fair to say, you know, they'll consult with, or sell it.
It's, it's, it's a very good point.
It'll be something when we find out. Go, just sell it.
It's good. We're being labor intensive, but, you know, if, and non, and non-paid staff member goes through or non-paid person, get it canceled, goes through GIS and, well, I say unpaid, you know, obviously not hourly or whatever, uh, go through GIS and look at, look at properties. You can get ownership information there. I know we digress, but, uh, yeah, there, it's, it's just, it's frustrating, it's like living next, next door to the, to the people who won't move their yard. There are places that, on Ringel Road, that just need help, or need something. The owners appear there, nothing like to do with that.
If you want to put paint in there under eligible projects, certainly, the only reason why you don't want to get in some of the routine is that, and painting is a maintenance item, and you only have a certain amount of dollars to deal with. In other cities that I have worked in, you had half a million, two million dollars to deal with, and you spent all this time. And you had the revenues from it, so business licenses, so if we don't have a business license program right here, not as heavy as what they have in Georgia.
I'm fine with leaving it out. We're just going to have to get creative in terms of getting some folks to comply, because even, again, having an application, please apply, maybe to them, they, they. Anyway. Counsel?
Wait, yes, sir. So I don't need to pause your real version of it? It says on the second sentence, it says, the total project cost shall not exceed $20,000. So my question is, what if, you know, someone, Jay, he's got a project that exceeds $20,000?
We only pay 10.
I know, but I'm just asking, maybe that's more of a question for.
That's a good point. We reworded that a little bit because it sounds like it is.
Sounds like if you exceed $20,000 total project, you're not eligible.
Right.
Total project shall.
If there was been $100,000 on it, we would pay 10 and should be happy. And, uh, so, yeah. Second, sir, we've got the third down?
Yes.
Project review.
And if that, if we make that change and back up on the grant program funding on the first page, then it should say $10,000 for the first $20,000 of cost per project. Because it says for a total cost of $20,000 a project. Should we say the first $20,000? $10,000 for the first $20,000. And then in that same section, I notice we stripped in the $100,000 budget amount. How will we, what are we looking at budgeting for this? Is it just, uh, does it say that each year?
Yes, yes. How we done it in other cities is, is what I would recommend is whatever dollars we put in there. Now, right now, it's, it's hard for me to justify putting $100,000 in there. They haven't had many grants for the past two years.
I was wondering.
I put $50,000 in, you know, this year, the next year, if I, if I spend all $50,000 and I can find $100,000, yes. As for the budget, but as I mentioned earlier, counsel, if they're in the budget. As for the budget, but as I mentioned earlier, councilman, if they're in the border region, I'm going to spend those dollars instead of the general.
Agreed.
We can make those changes on the, on those two sections that you meant. I see what you're saying. Just throw it off. I know what it says, but they may not.
Yeah. And then the last question I have is, under the building facade improvement grant application process, we specifically inserted Melissa's name. And I don't know if we just can make that general, you know, the building.
No, right.
Because she quits, we're going to have to then modify this.
And just modify and change it in that one.
What, does that make any?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's not going to be in the ordinance of the resolution?
No. Oh, no, it will be, it will be the resolution adopted. That's just a, we'll have to call it and just straighten change what I made. Right now, she's, or, you know, have something.
I just know if she quit and someone else come in, we're going to have to then bring another resolution to the council and change it, is that what I'm asking?
I don't think we need to do that.
Which is a good question.
We don't have any generic emails in the city. And I just can't send it to a clerk because who gets it? Emails are name-specific in East Ridge. She's a permanent clerk.
You can make a generic email. I do have one for community@eastridgetn.gov and those emails go directly to my Outlook. So it is possible if you wanted Melissa to be able to handle those emails, our IT department can create clerk@eastridgetn.gov or whatever you want to call it, facade grant, anything. And he can set it up to where those emails go directly to her so they won't be asked by anybody. So that is a dark council if you want to do that.
I mean, I'm not trying to be, but it's, it's time someone quits and I'll push it out.
Yeah, I, I understand. I understand. Well, that's, that would be if I'm in.
And we're okay with that.
If you take the name out of here and people see the applicant, who do they call? It's nice to have somebody that has a concern, that somebody can call to get the information about the program. But I found that's, you know, just a court. I know she'll eventually get, some people have questions that they want to talk. We can do that.
I don't think it would, it was asked.
I don't know. You can't, you can't omit that email. Can't omit that email.
What did you say?
Because the problem you have with that is he's out of state, applicants, property owners that are out of state, you're going to have them, people just don't mail things in anymore. Set things in by email. Make it harder, then we'll go, more arduous on them.
Anyone want to take a stab at motion? Yeah. So we have obviously the things that Councilman Williams brought up as far as the, tweaking the wording so that it doesn't.
If you want, we can tweak the wording and bring it back to the next council for two weeks.
If, if, if that works for everyone else, that would be fine with me. It's great to have the red line copy, it would also be good to have the completely clean new copy. I'm sorry. Okay. I thought this was the, I'm sorry, I thought it was the existing.
That's correct.
I didn't even read it because I thought it was the existing. Thank you.
Make a motion to table.
Until April twenty-seventh.
We'll get our way.
That's good.
Take a motion.
We have a motion and a second to table to the next meeting, April twenty-seventh. Roll call please.
Councilor Stoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ralton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairlawn?
Yes.
I would like to say though, I definitely like the direction of the changes that I think, I think it's very good. We need to make it obviously somehow more open because.
It's got to be opened up to more so that more people can see that they have a lot to do, to do something. I need to stop.
Thank you. Item I request to host additional public forum on April twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen regarding the recreation comprehensive plan.
Yes, Mayor Council, we had our first meeting. It's not really more unless it needed, it's more where people can come in at their leisure and do it, it's like an informal input study. We did that on April first at nine thirty and we did get maybe a handful, it was less than ten people total that showed up and put their information, it was good information. But we just want to have another opportunity to gather more. I know that we are around or maybe exceeded a hundred online poll informations, that's good. We're still keeping that up. But staff at Southeast Development District that is helping us with this plan would like to do one on April the twenty-fourth. It's a Monday night, starts at five thirty and will end at seven. And that would be to where people could come at their leisure between those times and visit each station, put their input in, ask questions of staff, and hopefully we can gather some more information by having a different timeframe because we didn't try to capture our Saturday morning and, you know, there were sports going around at that time and that's what they have entered, some of the people that wanted to come, be able to, especially those with children. But that's what we want to propose this Monday night. The forum is available. We already have it reserved tentatively until we get permission from you all to host the second one.
Motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve. The roll call please.
Councilor Stoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ralton?
Yes.
Mayor Lake?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And we do have the two items that were added, item J and item K. Item J is approval for the city to purchase tickets for the Optimist Club barbecue at Camp Jordan Park on the sixth.
Mayor Lake, you're the city councilor, what do you want? Forty tickets and coming around three hundred dollars if I'm not stuck in all that. And there are kids and just make my fishing video and stuff like that. So we've already had an okay report for maybe down Camp Jordan Park, helping.
What time is it?
It's eleven to three.
But how much are they per ticket?
It's okay, well, we've got some tickets for seven dollars a ticket, some four dollars a ticket. And so we just, part of the power that the city said we could break it up, bring them to the tickets. I'd like to ask you, if we're around forty tickets, they're around, like tickets.
Counsel, do you want to do the same, same as last year?
What are we improving?
Versus this? Is it more?
Yeah, but is it, forty tickets a five or what?
Is it in the amount of?
Out of last year?
Three, three hundred.
I'll take about three hundred dollars last year, what have to, we just sit down and drop that many tickets.
Can we have, we're going to do, we're going to, probably not to your last year, probably not this late, do some, have a wrap or something, bowl weights or.
You get some, you know.
I could bring out four dollar tickets, you know, sandwich tickets, some on plates like that, so. If I had the much three hundred dollars to bring out four dollar tickets.
What's, what?
Sandwich, yeah. Chicken, pork, or meat?
Uh, pork, chicken, pork, pork planks are, coleslaw, baked beans for seven bucks for both the plates and chicken, barbecue and sandwiches are four dollars for either sandwich and chips.
That's good.
So while, versus or something.
Okay, so. We can, it's base six, so we, we have some time to determine exactly what we can do with the tickets, what we want to distribute them somehow. Motion has been made for three hundred dollars worth.
It's what it was last year.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. We can have the roll call please.
Councilor Stoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ralton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairlawn?
Yes.
Item K, discuss and or take action on volume development providing preliminary engineering and design plans for relocation of the streetlights, thanks for the warning.
Okay, one of the phases for the exit one development entails the relocation of the streetlights on North Mount Exit on Rims, exit one, and east side of Ringle Road, over seventy-five, going east, within the project boundaries. We were out there last Friday, staff himself, along with the APB representative and our project engineers, Vonn and Melton, they say, we need to coordinate this work timely-wise with construction of the exit one interchange project. We have attached here an engineered proposal for Vonn and Melton, who are the project engineers, on providing preliminary engineering and design plans for relocation of the streetlights at exit one at the cost of twenty-four thousand five hundred. EPB is aware of the scope of work that needs to be done and they're ready to proceed. Most of the plans are in hand. So take several, I'd say that the, you get approval tonight, the nation path is staying on by the, you say, middle to end of May, in about four weeks' time, you can give EPB the schedule, which would be more than enough time to be able to coordinate the lights. This is the streetlights that, that are going to use the same old safe light, it's going to be more.
Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Do you have any questions, comments? We have the roll call please.
Councilor Stoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ralton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairlawn?
Yes.
All right, that's all we have, hopes. Sorry. So much and it took so long. It's been five weeks between meetings. Next, next time's going to be pretty brutal too, so. Bring your dinner with you next time. I hope everyone has a very happy Easter. We'll see you again between. Oh, yes, City Hall is closed tomorrow, so. Come right with the city manager.
He won't be here.
Thank you all for being here tonight.